It appears that we have one counselor missing, Mr. Russellman. At this time, I think I'd like to do a proclamation honoring the service and sacrifice of a member of our community. And so if all of you would stand up. Let me read this and share it with them. I understand Mom and Dad are here this evening. This is a proclamation honoring Marine Corps Lance Corporal Ty Hart and eleven other Marines for their sacrifice. Whereas Lance Corporal Ty Hart, a 2012 Stateon High School graduate, was one of twelve Marines, memorialized Friday, January 22, 2016 during a service in Hawaii. Hart and the others died when two helicopters crashed during a nighttime training mission off the coast of Hawaii. The search ended Tuesday, January 19 after round-the-clock multi-agency effort failed to locate any sign of the service members. Whereas Hart served as a Charlie Hotel 53 Echo Super Stallion helicopter crew chief with Marine Heavy Helicopters Scrogglin 463, Marine Aircraft Group 24, First Marine Aircraft Wing stationed on Marine Corps Base Hawaii. Whereas Hart 21 from rural West State and joined the Marine Corps on August 8, 2012 and married Hannah Hart six months ago. Whereas his decorations include the National Defense Medal and the Global War on Terrorism Service Medal. Whereas the willingness of our troops to complete dangerous training to prepare for any mission our nation asks of them will not be forgotten. And whereas these individuals are most deserving of our appreciation and thanks, therefore the State and City Council in gratitude for the dedicated service and sacrifice rendered by members of our military issues the following proclamation to honor Lance Corporal Ty Hart and the eleven other Marines for their sacrifice. Considered and proclaimed on this first day of February 2016, over my signature. Thank you, folks. I want to present these to the panel. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
I would just like to say, we truly appreciate what this community has done for us, the support we got. We haven't wanted for anything. And through the memorial service, everybody just did everything they could. Made it very easy for us. I think it helped the community. I know it helped us tremendously. But I want to thank all of you for the efforts you made. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Let's see, are there any additions to the agenda? Declarations of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, bias. Proclamation is done. Let's see, comments from the public. Mr. Young.
Yes, sir.
Dave? Go ahead, please.
Well, my name is Dale Young. I lived at 1846 East Virginia. I don't even need the mic, I guess. For seventeen years now and four years ago, going on five, started doing the free movies in the park with other various things in the community. And I just, I know I haven't seen a lot of your face at these events, so I brought a little slideshow if you'd like to see of the impact that it's having on the community. If you did not, we can pass on that. And I hope it could be entered into your consideration for the grant request that was made prior. So would you like to see the slideshow, Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Absolutely.
It'll be brief. A picture's worth a thousand words, and no one here wants to hear me talk that much.
Okay. Me neither.
Okay. So, everybody, here you go. Hey, y'all? Somebody don't wait for the telephone down there for eighteen and a half years. I don't know if this thing's on right. Purpose lines, tangled wires. This is already the end of the lines.
Sure.
I guess we should have a little spiel. Okay, so this is the first year we did this, and really, there was nobody. There was just desire on my part to build something in this community that would be accessible to everyone, including, at that time, I was involved in several things in the community, but it really didn't have much of a feel with anybody. It really was lacking resources. So this is the screen, and this is the park right over there, right behind the library door. I can talk louder if you'd like to. I can project. Shout out, you know, it's all. The city's been very, very gracious in allowing me to use these facilities and kind of showcase what I think is the centerpiece to our community, the park, and pool, library, and food center. I just think that's kind of the hardest thing that should be, have all the attention necessary to it as possible. So, radio board, that's kind of the best way to market it, I believe, or not. Some of the social media, Facebook, and state leadership's career as well, but the citizens are really impressed, too. At these events, there's a time prior to the show, the marketing portion, I do an ad or slideshow for the numerous sponsors that participate in this event, and it kind of gives a little bit of a marketing off if you ever went there. This is a regular night, there's about 220 people there. Hotter nights, especially last year, we saw numbers take down to 120 people, but on average, it's around 200. It's really tough to take pictures in the dark. Flash cameras, this is 2013, I started distributing these cards to all the school lists of the kids that were over the days of summer vacation, and had an idea of what's going on. That's kind of standard, half an hour, an hour prior to the event, they start showing up. Stay down from their places, have a little dinner, if it's all in the dinner, play on the playground. It's a really good community event. And that's really good. 2014, that year, oh, let me back up. First year, our largest crowd was about 150 people. 2013, we had 220 people. And 2014, off the record, we were really hosting 400 people, like, many shows. The weather, they, again, I wish this was brighter, but that's actually about what your people are in, the crowds right now, and all the lights are usually back, where the walking path is. So, shot, different night. Who's supposed to, who's supposed to learn that time? That's the sun's going down. 2015, I, it's kind of funny because in 2014, I was wondering about setting on 295 degrees at times, and, well, 2015, it was 105 degrees. So, I had nothing more to whine about, compared to my job. But that, that made it count very difficult to take in, because people would generally show up in a half an hour from one event to another, and it started to make them happy. But it appeared to find another area that was occupied, and there were about 230, 230 people average. So, the last one that we have, right down, which is at the screen here, so, garbage gal. Another big night. And then the last one, the sun's going down, back, this is back, our largest crowd in the second year. So, it's very well attended. The numbers, as far as bringing in money to pay for it last year, were down. There's a new event in town that unfortunately got to a couple of my key sponsors before I did, and the funds just weren't really available. So, it's going to be some adjustments to get this year. We're only planning on four shows, just because of the true cost of doing it. We're really going to have, how much, about $400, so we can do it reasonably, and we've got to maintain this, you know, this stuff, this costs a lot of money. So, it's not a core profit by any means, and if I had more time, I'd probably register as a top profit case, if we're not profitable, but have a real shop, it's just, that's a problem. So, I'm sure I can see that in the screen, and I think you're supposed to tell me. Thank you. Any questions you have to ask?
Thank you. Questions?
I had a question. I had a question, Dave, when I read your, Dale, when I read.
Oh, whatever.
Yeah, okay. Hey, Bill.
He's on the main draw, the chat.
I had a question. When I read your proposal, it looked like that you were asking for money to cover last year.
Well, that's where this grant was.
Okay.
Because originally, I believe, the process was in July, and I pushed back, and then the process changed, which was fine.
Yeah, okay. That kind of confused me. It's like, okay, so we're paying for last year, not for this coming year.
Let me go back to my viewers.
Other questions?
Right, it's right.
Dale, go ahead.
So, any further questions? Perfect.
We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks much. Okay. Pam Pugsley.
My name is Pam Pugsley, and I'm the interim library director. And I was so glad that Dale had that wonderful picture of that ugly sign. I couldn't have asked for anything better, because then.
Would you like it back?
Yeah, that was, that was really good. It's just a hideous sign, yes. And we, I'm talking on behalf of the community grant process that we have, the Friends of the Library as a nonprofit group have applied for this grant to help fund the sign. We would like to put a nice new electronic sign there, and it would be available to all the nonprofits that use our sign now, but you have to be first come, first served, and you have it for two weeks. So, this new sign, we will, you could have it up for a long period of time, and it changes all of the time, and so it'll be great for all of our nonprofits that advertise. Some of the people would be the YMCA, the family building blocks, and our library especially needs it because of our, all the programs that we have, children's programs and so forth, especially during the summer, all the summer reading programs. We could put up there who's the featured person that's coming. When the animal, when the, what's his name, Reptile Man comes, that was our biggest, that's our biggest hit, the guy with the huge long snake. But anyway, it would be great in the movies. We could do, say what the, what movies are going to be, the Summer Fest, it would work for that, and the Heritage Foundation, when they do their events over at the Brown House. The cost of the sign is $17,821. And so far, we, the Friends of the Library, have contributed $2,000. The State Memorial Pool has contributed $500, and we got $200 from the Stateon Elementary, they don't call it PTA, but it's PTA from what I remember. And so we would like to have a portion of this, the grant, to help fund this, and we will continue to fundraise for this sign. I think it'd be really great for the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Do you have an, do you have any questions?
Yes. Anyone?
Can we get the audience, or not?
I don't know. This is unprecedented, an audience asking a question.
I put that sign, I don't know how many, I don't know how many times I put that, used that pole, what were the letters?
Can you come to the microphone?
Come up here, Mike.
Please.
Just talk louder. Just talk loud. Okay. I have put up literally hundreds of times the letters on that signboard, and it is terribly dangerous. You have a big metal pole, and you have letters that won't stick, and you're trying to hook them in the plastic, and the technology is just ridiculous to try and do it. I see people out there standing on stepladders in the back of pickup trucks, trying to put it up, because they can't get the pole to work. So, just as a community member who's done it many times, and probably will do it many times in the future, I really support that sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Everybody else?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Pam. Mr. Edwards. Dave?
I'm Dave Edwards, and I represent Smokin' Down the Highway, the barbecue festival that is now in our second year, that we hold at the Harvest Festival site, just outside of Sublimity. And I know you've heard all the things I've had to say before, but I just kind of want to reiterate that we do do a lot more than just cook barbecue out there. Although we are going to cook a lot more this year. We are, from everything we've seen so far, and the calendars, and the pros that we've talked to, and the things that we're bringing to the festival this year, we are the largest barbecue-related festival in the entire Pacific Northwest this year. And that's in only our second year. We are expanding it this year. We will probably double the area junior and senior amateurs barbecue programs. We're going to be able to send a youth from the six to, or, excuse me, the 11 to 17 category in the amateurs. We're going to send them with a parent back to Kansas City to compete in the World Junior Finals. We think that's going to be a tremendous thing for the family, a lot of fun for them. We're bringing in two full days of racing. They're called the Outlaw Winged Karts, or basically a high-performance go-kart. They're really something to see, and we're going to have a two-day professional racing program. Actually, it will be the Western United States Championships, the professional barbecuers. This will be the Oregon State Championship that we'll be hosting, and the two amateur division will be the Western States Amateur and Adult Championships. And we do that to bring in families, to experience something together along those ranges, to develop some cooking skills and things like that, that we see all the time, handed down from father to son, mother to daughter, grandmother, and so on and so forth. See it on TV all the time. And it's just fantastic to watch, especially the youth, little guys out there cooking hamburgers, and next year, they're going to be cooking steaks and stuff, and see the dads and the moms in there helping them and doing everything. It's a family-oriented thing, and it just builds that family unit. I don't think there's anything more important than that. Along with that, it's also the Oregon State Craft Beer Week, happens to be during that week, the August 6th and the 7th, that we're having the festival. So, we're pairing up with the Salem Craft Brew Association. They're going to be putting on a large competition, awareness, demonstration, so on and so forth, a little more for the adults. We hope to have a much larger children's area, something like you might have seen with the Harvest Festival last year. And we will be doing the book giveaway. We hope to give away between eight and 12,000, mostly hardcover, new and slightly-used books there at the fair, and then afterwards, get them into the hands of lower-income families and people that really appreciate that their kids have those books and things. We'll have, along with the normal vendors and things like that. Once again, I think we pour a lot of money back into the community. We have a lot of youth groups in the area. We give them the opportunity to come out and help us set up, help us run the festival, and then we give money back to them, to their groups. The Peer Court last year, we put $700 into their coffers, the State football team, $700, four or five other groups, various amounts of money. The number of hours they put in, excuse me, then we donate a like amount of dollars based on how many hours they work, and they do a fantastic job for us, and there's probably going to be a whole lot more work for them this year. So I think along with those things, and the recognition that we bring to the area, along with the really hard dollars that we bring back into the community for the services, the materials, so on and so forth, I think it's just a really neat thing, and it's going to continue to grow and bring more and more recognition to the community in the area. Unfortunately, when we do that, costs go up. Our budget has more than doubled overall from last year. Our site rental has gone up 175% from last year. A lot of things we really didn't expect to happen, but we'll do our best and make sure that we get everything done. So we really appreciate anything that folks can do for us. Thank you. Any questions?
What's the price of admission?
This year, we looked at what we had last year. We tried to keep it low, so as many people as possible could afford to come in, and we had it at 12, or, excuse me, $10. That was way low, we found out. So we're trying to keep it down around $12. $12 will maybe be a dollar to $2 parking. We may have a sponsor that's going to cover all the parking, so we'll be able to eliminate that. And we're expecting this year, from everybody, we've shown the program, too, from the Harvest Festival folks, to professional promoting organizations, fair boards, as far as that trying to kind of gauge what we could expect. They're telling us to expect somewhere in the neighborhood between 5,000 and 7,000 people. Last year, we had right at about 2,000 people, but we had 105-degree temperatures that Saturday when we tried to open up, and we had a little music festival over in Sweet Home that drew about 55,000 people over there. A lot of people that were there would probably have been with us had not that, the music been going on over there. So we moved our dates, so we're not in competition with anybody this year. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Okay. Let's see, that's it for comments from the public. Our consent agenda this evening has two items on it, January 19, City Council minutes, and personnel matters, appeal policy and procedure. So if the council would like to, if it hasn't already looked over the consent agenda, when you're ready, we can go to some action on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll offer a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Now, second, ma'am.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended, or not, as presented. Thank you. Presented, not amended. I discover in reading the instructions here that I should have Alyssa pull the council on this. If there's no dissent, it passes. If there's dissenting votes, then we're supposed to discuss those items that created the dissent. So Alyssa?
Yes.
Yeah.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Counselor Nicol?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Glidwell?
Yes.
Motion passes, four to zero.
Four to zero. Good. Trying to do it right. What's next? What is next? Turn the page. Turn the page. What's next? There are no public hearings tonight. Good. Unfinished business, community grants. Ms. Schaefer?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, I have tallied your results for the rating of the community grants. There was a total possible points that could have been earned by each application of 5,000 points. So at the very bottom line, it gives you the tally of all your combined votes against the weighted matrix that we have over on the left-hand side of the graph. I'm here to help you discuss this and award these grants. The first grant that scored the highest was for the Peer Court.
So that's number one?
That's number one.
Sharon, you must be doing something.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Completely useful, which is neat. Thank you. Yes, counselor?
So when, Christine, when we looked at how, what the components are going to be that we were rating things on, who came up with those components?
I made recommendations to the council, and I think I brought 10 or 12 different ideas and concepts for you, and these are the ones you came down to as a combined group of being the most important to you.
Okay. Because my concern is, since we have such a small amount of money, that the very same people get it year after year after year, when it would be nice, I think, to give kind of a new, you know, a new something, a chance to kind of kick off something that may then continue on in our community, and it not be a regular part of someone's budget that we're just putting into year after year. And so that, that's my concern with some of the people who applied, were people who have gotten it every single year, pretty much since the inception. And so maybe next year, maybe, too late for this year, but next year, maybe we could, the council could look at putting a component in there that says if somebody has gotten it every single year for the last 10 years, that maybe we need to be giving other people a chance to get some of this money.
I would agree on that.
There are other groups that have previously been awarded and applied that aren't in the applicants this year. So it does have some variation. There are some that have received funds from us for many years that are represented here.
Right. Christine, there is a category, though, for providing a new or unique service, so that is factored into here somewhat.
Yes. Right.
Okay. Go ahead, Christine. What's? Who came out in the second place?
Second place was the Free Movies in the Park. So both Peer Court and Free Movies has requested $1,500. The third request was the message board for the line. The third request was the message board for the library. The Veterans History coming in fourth, their request being $500. Brown House being fifth, a $1,000 request, and then Barbecues being $2,500 was in last place.
Was, Christine, was, I heard some dollar amounts as you went through those. Was there some money left by the time you got to the bottom?
No, our total grant is for $5,000 to be awarded, and these requests add up to $8,400.
Eighty-four.
So, we're a little over.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor?
Can I ask a question of Dave again, if I would? Please. Dave, do you project giving another donation this year to Peer Court, and if so, do you anticipate how much that might be?
I do anticipate that.
Dave, can you come to the microphone? Can you come to the microphone? Thanks.
I know I'm asking you to guess, but I'm just trying to see if we can balance it out here.
Yeah, they were, last year, they were one of our larger participants through the festival, as far as helping out and everything. And we saw some areas where we're going to need some more, even at the same size and ratio of last year, we saw where we're going to, we would have needed more people. And with the additional size this year, gosh, just, I could see it easily hitting $1,000.
Okay. I'm not trying to make you commit to anything, I'm just, just a question.
Oh, no, I just, it's kind of hard to say, but I could pretty easily see it hitting that, I think.
Okay, thank you.
As well as other, the football guys, yeah, I think that's going to increase, too.
Anything else, Christine, on this, or shall we move to?
Well, so, in years past, you know, it's worked out the best if people just made maybe suggestions or recommendations on what they feel an adequate funding level would be for, say, request number one.
Christine, just for a slow writing hand, would you go through the placement again, please?
Yes.
First five?
Peer Court at $1,500.
Okay.
Free Movies, $1,500. The message board, $1,500. Veterans History, $500. Brown House, $1,000. Barbecue, $2,500.
And those amounts are what they requested?
That's what they requested.
So, using our matrix, is it realistic to say what they would get if we were to pass this as it sits?
If I use what percentage they, I did kind of run those numbers. It doesn't quite come out very fair, like, using Peer Court and barbecue as an example, based on the percentage of points they scored, Peer Court would receive $1,150 in the barbecue, $1,300. And then everyone else, I mean, they were buried, but...
Now, it's based on percentage?
Mm-hmm.
So, the Peer Court would be $1,300, and then...
No, it was $1,125.
$1,100, and then Movies would be?
I didn't bring all the numbers.
Okay, but that's...
But I had run them, and, you know, they kind of fluctuated up and down based on what percentage of the points they were. So, they, I think Movies in the Park ended up at about $800 and some dollars, and then...
I mean, because that kind of seems like a fair thing to just do it based on the percentage of what they got.
May I, I'm trying to adjust my asking amount.
Well, it does encourage the people that apply for the most to receive the most.
Again, I say that we just go with the percentages. I mean, we could be here all night going around it, but if we just go with the percentage of what we voted on, and that percentage is what people get.
Is that a motion?
You're better at that than me, Ralph. Go ahead. I make a motion that we go with what Christina did and just give the percentage of money based on what we rated the percentages for the each request.
And I would second that.
Got an offer of a motion to, oh, go with this matrix system and throw the numbers at our financial wizard and let her figure out who gets what. That's not quite right, but close. You okay with that, Christine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I don't really want to vote on something. I don't feel comfortable voting on something without the numbers in front of us tonight. And I want to stop this very thing from happening next year, so I'd like to see that part of the motion where you say we don't just give the percentage because...
Oh, I did bring them.
You did?
It's just really chicken scratch.
I'm listening.
I'm fully positive, I'll show you.
And I would agree.
Can you read those, please?
Why don't you just read them off?
Okay.
Want me to read them?
Well...
If I can read them?
Somebody...
Tell me if I'm...
I know, it's just the... So, Peer Court's $1,100. Grant number two, Movies in the Park, is $825.
Slower. $100. Movies is $825. Okay, third? Next one?
I'm kidding, man.
What was that? Library message?
The barbecue is $1,375.
Okay.
The Brown House is $550.
Okay.
The Veterans was $275. And I guess I'm missing the...
And the message board is whatever was left.
Right, I'm missing that part, but, yeah, sorry.
It'd be $875 on the last one, if I did my math right, on the sign.
That's right.
That should be reversed, then?
Okay.
Between the Free Movies and the message board?
Right, it probably is.
So, you're saying it should be $825 for the sign and $875 for the Movies?
Right.
May I make a comment, please?
Yeah.
I am utterly confused. I really was under the impression that the title of the grant had some bearing on where the funds were actually going to go. And I understand the economic opportunity, the limited amount of opportunity that the event and Sublimity brings, but I don't know how that benefits the city of State in any way, especially the citizens of State. So, if you could define that, Brazila, I'd love to hear it.
Actually, it does benefit me. I have an Airbnb. And it benefits everybody who owns a business in town when there's 5,000 people that come into our town.
So, there were 2,000 last year, potentially 3,000 for the State and Community Grant to go in that direction, I think is appalling. Just my comment.
Okay.
You can dismiss it as you already have.
Brian, did you want to, Counselor, did you want to expand on your next-year comment? I wish you would.
Sure, so, just as Mr. Young said when he said, "I want to up my request," the higher the amount in order to get the biggest portion of funds is what people are going to start doing from now on out. So, we need to have a mechanism in place to correct that. Having said that, this is the matrix that we came up with this time. So...
Can I speak to this, too?
And I agree, Brian, and I think that there are several things that we can do, maybe to, that we'll look at this differently next year, and we won't find ourselves in the same situation. It's a little hard to backpedal right now, but we could just say that people can put in for $1,000 grants. And, I mean, there's ways that we can do that, but again, this is already drawn out. This was supposed to be done last June, and it's certainly not perfect, and it's certainly not going to make everybody happy, but I say that we go ahead and do it, and then we revisit how we look at this grant and try and make it more equitable in people applying for it.
Great minds thinking alike. The flat-dollar amount appeals to me, too. I don't know whether there's a fairness question in that or not, but it would be less complex than this. I frankly didn't understand it. I was stuck in my two favorites and would have given them the whole thing, but that wouldn't work, so it's just better that you folks sorted it out. Are we ready to go to any kind of motion on this, or would you like to discuss?
I think you already have a motion, Mr. Mayor.
And second?
I know, any kind of vote then, moved, rather than, the motion is there. That was a test to see who was listening. Alyssa, would you pull the council on this?
Mr. Mayor?
If there's no more discussion.
Just a little bit more discussion there.
Go ahead.
I want a commitment that we're going to change this and maybe put it on a future agenda item, maybe even, you know, into the summer at some point.
I'll absolutely bring it back. I'll bring the application back. That's where we set out the terms and the criteria so that it can all be discussed, whether we should have a limit or on the size of the grant that can be requested.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Alyssa?
Sure.
Counselor Glidewell?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Nigle?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
And I want to thank everyone that was involved in this community grant program. And we'll get it done better next time. New business, none. Good. Staff commission reports, none. Good. Comments from the public, any more this evening? Anything? Business from the city administrator. Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder to the council that we have an executive session after this meeting dealing with ongoing litigation. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Business from the chair, two possible appointments with your consideration for the Planning Commission, Ellen Nunez, and the Public Safety Commission, Carrie Sessom. And with you folks' approval, I would like to appoint those two people to those committees.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Ellen Nunez to the Planning Commission and Public Safety Commission, Carrie Sessom. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we'll declare that motion passed. Business from the council, anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I want to ask Mr. Campbell, he might have a copy of the council rules with you tonight, do you?
I'm sorry, I do not.
Okay. I was trying to find mine before I came. We'll address it at another meeting.
Okay. All right. Future agenda items, is there any other, any other business from the council? Future agenda items, Tuesday, February 16th, second-hand ordinance, land-use public hearing, State and Library, Public Library Foundation endowment contribution, and an open space dedication. Is there anything else this evening?
No, sir.
That's it? Thank you.